Next item. Alright, so I know it says on here that Pat and Jeanette are managing this, but Pat has graciously turned this over to me since I was part of the conversation on this. So what we've got here, and I'm just gonna tee it up a little bit. This was as a result of the board matter that the Board of Supervisors had last October, following up on our retreat. They asked for us to work on three things jointly with them. One was the budget, another was land use, and the third was skipped, right, which we're gonna have a work session on skipped on Thursday night. So this was as a result of conversations we had, both board chairs, both Budget Committee chairs, and our budget staff. So this is the draft that we have. And the Board of Supervisors, the reason we need to do this today is the Board of Supervisors is prepared to vote on this at their board meeting tomorrow. They're planning to bring it up. So they want to know by tomorrow if we have any revisions to it. So they can consider those revisions. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Susan and Kristen to give us a few more details. Thank you.
Sure. I'm gonna quickly go over the document that was attached in board docs. And as Chairman Evans mentioned, this is the result of the 2016 Joint Board Retreat. And we're gonna share the draft work plan from the Budget Work Group. So that was one of the three work groups. And this work group consisted of Chairman of the Board of Supervisors Sharon Bolova, Chairman of the School Board Sandy Evans, County Budget Chair Jeff McKay, and School Budget Chair Tammy Dernak-Kofak. So we had four board members on the work group. And as Chairman Evans mentioned, this was presented to the County Board of Supervisors on January 31st. And there were no changes from their meeting. So they are scheduled to vote on this tomorrow. And then our board, you all, are scheduled to take action on February 23rd if there are no changes. So the work group defined five items. So the discussion at the joint retreat framed the work around these five items. And you'll see below that there is a brief description of each item and a timeline for the deliverables. So the first item is to develop a more detailed outline for both county and schools, clearly defining all of the budget development milestones and touchpoints. So the goal is to better understand the timeline requirements for both organizations to ensure that we can facilitate joint fiscal forecasting and budgeting in the future. Because the requirements for the school system, like what we've been talking about all day, our timeline is vastly different from county's timeline. So this is trying to help us better understand what those touchpoints are between the two organizations. So the first draft of this calendar is scheduled to be presented at the Joint Budget Meeting next week with the final calendar delivered to both boards by March 7th. So we'll have our first discussion on this particular item next Tuesday. And then item two identifies possible opportunities for further collaboration between the two organizations. By May 5th, staff will provide an inventory of existing joint efforts and possible areas of future exploration. And the Joint Budget Committee meeting will be scheduled for mid-June for any discussion. And then the goal is to have the boards identify and give direction to staff on which areas to evaluate in the next 12 months. So this is kinda sharing what we already do together and what future opportunities there might be in the future. And we'll be bringing that to the two boards sometime in June. Item three relates to identifying opportunities for shared space or multi-use for the future CIP development process with a focus on geographic opportunities and joint board priorities. So staff will provide possible opportunities between the two CIPs in outlining the contacts of available funds and debt capacity at a joint committee meeting to be scheduled in next September. So this work involves the staffs from both sides looking at their CIP development process to see if there are any opportunities for joint projects within the current CIPs. And then the fourth item is developing a joint legislative agenda that would identify specific areas in the education funding that would improve overall state funding for education while engaging other localities. This will be provided to both boards at a joint legislative meeting to be scheduled again in late September. And this is trying to be a little bit more intentional about education funding. Where are certain areas in the state funding formulas that we should be addressing to increase the overall education funding from the state? And then the final item in this work plan involves comparing non-public safety positions within the county and schools. The initial phase of the work will focus on identifying and reviewing position functions with the subsequent phase that will analyze compensation, starting with pay ranges. So these activities will provide the basis for future discussion and opportunities for more consistency between the county and schools. So we've also had a lot of conversation about our compensation package compared to the county's compensation package. Where are the pay ranges between the two organizations? So this work involves comparing certain position then functions and identifying where those pay ranges, similarities or differences, and the overall compensation package. And because of the work that's already outlined in this plan and our current work with our compensation study revising the salary scales, this is recommended for calendar year 2018. So these are the five items that have been identified from the Budget Work Group. And just to kinda summarize again, next week, you're gonna see a calendar of budget development processes that are aligned better between the county and the schools. Sometime in June, you will see opportunities where we can collaborate further with the county. And in September, you will also see a list of where there might be some opportunities between the two CIPs. And then in calendar 2018, we'll embark on the work of comparing compensation between the two organizations.
Okay, thank you so much. Well, that's a... So our job today is to get board member questions and see if we can give tentative approval to this or if we have revisions to it before the Board of Supervisors takes it up tomorrow. And then it will be on our agenda on the 23rd. Ms. McLaughlin?
So if we could go back up to number one. I was just struggling with the language in this section. Honestly, it's a lot of words. And I wasn't actually trying... I was trying to just distill it to what is it that we're going to get from this first one? The others, I thought, were pretty clear. This one, I worry it was trying to kinda get around to something and it just doesn't actually speak to the heart of whatever it is.
I think we're trying to better educate both boards about the timelines of the budget cycle. So I think, you know, at times, the Board of Supervisors have their timelines pretty set. And then ours is... We're much more accelerated, just like we're having to make some budget decisions much sooner than when the transfer is available. So starting in the fall, we wanna be able to do a fiscal forecast jointly and then try to share with the County Board of Supervisors our budget milestones, our timelines, to say when we need to start identifying where there might be reductions if we don't have sufficient revenue. So it's trying to put all of those milestones and touchpoints on one calendar so that both boards can have a better understanding of when those timelines and touchpoints happen.
So maybe it's the second sentence where it says "The touchpoints of the county and school processes should be identified and described." Maybe it's "budget processes." Because, I mean, there's lots of different processes. So you're focusing on the budget processes. So I think that gives some clarity to the reader on what it is that you're trying to accomplish in that Section 1. Can we go to the next page? Okay. So that's fine.
So just to keep track of this, Madam Clerk, is there a way to at least tentatively capture that? Okay, thank you.
And then just at the very bottom, number five, or the fifth item. You all know, I speak about this all the time, that I would like to see there be a greater agreement and collaboration between the supervisors and the schools on the compensation. So can we go down to number five, please? The fifth bullet, yeah. So in the fifth bullet, so the... That's final sentence in that descriptive paragraph. "While the focus of the initial phase will be to identify and review these position functions, the subsequent phase will be to analyze compensation, starting with pay ranges." I just, I need to be honest. We have been on this conversation for at least two to three years now of getting the supervisors to understand that when they build their budget, starting with their forecast in the fall, they have to be thinking any employee, you know, compensation increases that they wanna do, they only do their side of the envelope. And they don't think about the fact that we have twice the number of employees they have. And so being able to project and say, "Oh, we'd like to give a 3% raise." But what that looks like on their side versus what it looks like for us is a wholly different demand in closing in on now this year at almost $100 million. So I guess I would like somewhere with the board's support to say that it's not gonna be just to analyze compensation, starting with pay raises, but also annual salary increases or compensation increases. Something that starts to move both the staffs. 'Cause I've talked to Ed Long about this, and he recognizes that, but it's not there.
And is that next standalone sentence, does that really capture that? We were trying to capture the future work beyond that initial phase.
Let me see if I could address that a little differently. I think what you're addressing is whether or not there should be comparable salary increases. I think that will be addressed through item number one. That's where we wanna start having with that calendar is to help us facilitate that joint fiscal forecasting. So when we're in the fiscal forecasting stage is when we would start to identify what salary increases would look like. This item really talks about, let's just say, if the functions were similar, do our accountants are paid within the similar range, comparable range, as the accountants on the county side? That's the work under number five. So I'm really hoping the work under number one, we could get to the issues that you've been raising about joint fiscal forecasting and what that looks like on the county side and what that looks like on our side.
Right. So then I would say then if you go back up to number one, if it doesn't, at least... And school board members, my goal here is that this... It doesn't feel like the county and the supervisors feel any pressure because they are the taxing authority. So they, in the end, can decide where the money goes. And they, in the end, can decide if we, you know, fund it the rate we did this past year. And, "Oh, how much do we have left?" Well, here's how we can then give our employees on our side X percent of a raise. But it's never that mindfulness of, "You got another twice the number of employees that require county dollars in order to get a raise." So if there's somewhere in there that it's... I just think we need to be intentional with the language, which is we're going to try and look at employee compensation as a piece of this. Annual compensation increases should somehow be delineated in one 'cause otherwise, it's never been touched. They just don't... And I thought that there's enough of us now saying that we want the county to be as mindful about our employees and forecasting for what revenue exists for raises and not in a vacuum of just, "How much do we think we can give county employees?" And good luck with your 2%.
So Ms. McLaughlin, is there something we could add at the end of that paragraph, or at least for the board to consider? It will also be used to facilitate joint fiscal forecasting, comma, and...
Including planning for employee compensation increases?
Yes.
Including planning for... Say that again, Ms. Michael.
Any changes or... Yeah, any... 'Cause it would... Any increases. I think it'd just be any increases.
Including increases.
An annual compensation.
In annual employee compensation. Okay, well, let's put that up. And again, we'll come back to the proposed changes. If that's agreeable to you, Ms. McLaughlin, then that's what we'll consider when we come back. Do you have any other items? Okay. Ms. Strauss?
I think by and large, I think this is fine. And I applaud those who worked on it. I think it was some very good ideas and suggestions. Two things. Clearly, from the school side, we struggle from inability to be competitive in the labor market. And we have a national problem as well with this. And we talk about our inability to be able to fill positions. And I guess from the county side, and this really doesn't have anything to do, I think, with this document. 'Cause on the county side, they always separate out how they treat police and fire separately and their first responders. Do they ever report on their ability or inability to fill positions outside of first responders? 'Cause I know that is always a concern for their... I don't know if they do or they don't, or maybe it's not an issue for them. But that's why, as we look at comparability many, many years ago, before school boards were elected, the Board of Supervisors would decide what the pay increases would be. And they were basically the same. There were sometimes deviations, for example, when they did merit pay. But since then, because we are not always tied to the Board of Supervisors, we can make individual decisions, such as our decision to change our salary scales for our master's level five to 15 years. Board of Supervisors is gonna take a look at that. Whereas traditionally, every some years, we do look at like positions because then you can, you actually can get a real comparability to make sure that we are not competing with each other. And that was always the rationale for doing that. 'Cause you don't wanna be competing within your county for like positions, but at the same time, allowing for flexibility in those areas where you have an unusual need 'cause you can't fill your positions. So I would not wanna be tied so tightly that we could not make different decisions based on what our real needs are. But it goes back to the question of, do they ever report on positions that they have a hard time filling or just first responders?
I don't know if they do regularly. That's an answer. A question that I can't answer. I think, following up on your suggestions after Ms. McLaughlin's, yours really, I think, does kinda fall under that number five.
Right.
You know, these activities, once we start analyzing these compensation components, you know, really will be that basis for our future discussions as we move forward.
Right. That's what, in general, I support this. I think the items that have been identified are logical places for us to collaborate and try to improve how we serve our county and our citizens. Thanks. Ms. Palchek?
Yes, briefly. Also, I do agree, these are important ways. I would just caution on number four, the legislative program. I think it's important, at the same time, I did hear from one of our delegates down in Richmond that they appreciate that we give Michael Malloy flexibility to make decisions and that I believe on the county side, they can't take a position unless, you know, under weekly Friday briefings, the board has given their representatives or lobbyists down there the ability to take a position on something on their legislative program. So just, I agree to having a joint program. Just wanna make sure we're not changing the way Michael Malloy is able to function. Just wanted to put that out there.
I... No. I think this is not about a joint program, but just working collaboratively to make sure we identify areas in the state formulas that can enhance the education funding. So we can, both sides can push for that same.
And I assume that will also include local abilities to raise revenue and other areas that indirectly affect education funding?
Yes. I think the focus really was on, are there any place within the state education formulas that we should be lobbying for a change to increase the overall state funding to education? I think that's why the language is also in there with other localities because we wanna make sure that our request isn't detrimental to other localities 'cause then there's that push and pull from other jurisdictions about whether or not they want the education formulas changed. But it's to kinda look at, what can we look at in our current formulas that would generate more revenue?
I understand. So I guess my question separately is, did we also consider just the ability of localities, whether they're cities, counties, towns, to be able to raise their own revenue that does not affect other localities?
Yeah, I'm sure it doesn't preclude us from doing that.
Okay. We can talk for that. I just, I think, you know, something, things come up that if they're not specifically education-focused, but they affect local funding structures, which here we rely so heavily on ours. So then, anything that imposes limits on that, it does affect us. So I don't know. I hope we can have that be a joint legislative program.
So Ms. Palchek, are you suggesting something like improving state funding and policy for education? Are you advocating to go beyond funding? Is that...
Well, I guess it's a state funding. I just wanna say, and, you know, whether we say county's abilities or locality's abilities to have flexibility in their ability to fund a local component of education. 'Cause even if we raise state funding, the formula remains the same. We see a small increase, right? And so we have to rely so heavily on our local funding. Recently, a bill went through that is trying to limit even more the ability for localities to...
Oh, so if I... So what you're saying is you want it, it's not just overall state funding for education. You want us to say, "We want more Fairfax County funding."
To have the... Yeah, to... Yes. I don't know if I'm making sense.
Well, actually, you are making sense. And... Well, I think when you're... If I understand, you're saying improving state funding for education, they can improve state funding, and we get nothing.
Well, we get nothing. And at the same time in this session, I was down there when they were trying to limit our ability to raise local funds. And so that was not on the, on Michael Malloy's agenda because it's not specific to education. It's more specific to county's funding abilities.
Do you have a proposed edit there that would clarify that?
State funding for education and... Yes, Ms. Heinz.
Would it do to say state funding and local flexibility? Or local authority?
I think local authority.
Okay. Local authority for education?
For education funding?
For education funding. I mean, I think... Yeah, I see what you're saying because it's our joint statement.
Which does not affect other localities, right? 'Cause I think this is saying, let's not, we're not fighting for the LCI change because that negatively impacts on others?
Could I... Would it help on the first part of that to say on improving our state funding? In other words...
So no, this is... This is saying, one is the overall, the pie for education funding from the state. I believe that's what this is referring to, is the enlarging the pie that goes to education, not looking at formulas or anything like that. So what I would say is to add, in addition to just looking at the state funding for education, is that something that affects us, that's generally just on the county's side because it's about funding, is locality's flexibility or ability to raise local revenue. Because there are efforts by the state sometimes to limit that.
Like proffers.
Like proffers.
So does that do it? That we've added "and local," improving state funding for education and local authority? Does that do it or no?
Well, we'd like to improve. We'd actually like to grow local authority. We have some folks down there who every year try to do it, so...
Focus on improving state funding for education. And, okay.
We can leave it at local authority. I think that's...
That's fine. Okay. Okay, well, okay. Mrs. Huff?
I just wanted to add to the employee compensation piece that I really think an important part of the conversation is to talk about our pension plans that are similar but different. I think we should talk about that as a county in the school system.
So are you suggesting adding something to what we just added on number one? Although we haven't added it yet.
Not sure if it'd be number one or back down. I don't know what number it was. Number five, where's that?
Ms. Huff?
For me, it's not planning for the annual budget. It's an actual discussion about how we both do it. And do we wanna combine how we do it? Do we wanna get them more in sync? So I think it's probably more appropriate here at number five. Yeah, maybe pay scales and benefits. So you were planning on...
Okay.
Then just to clarify, you were just starting with pay ranges.
Sorry, but this one's only for non-teacher and non-public safety. So I agree with Ms. Huff. But I assume that would maybe go under the future possible joint efforts? Was that number two or number three?
I don't care where it goes.
But I don't want it to just limit it to non-teacher and non-public safety. So just look at, is this a possibility for the future of having joint efforts? Looking at pension plans?
I guess I would prefer...
Well, that's actually the shared services, though. I think you might need to... If you go back to number one?
But for me, it's not just potential shared services. We might agree to keep them separate, but do we need to have them more aligned?
I think when we started discussing number five and employee compensation, one of the things that we wanted to clarify is, when you look at county and schools, we have some positions that are similar. For example, we each have budget analysts or accountants. But we have other positions that only occur in one organization or the other, so a teacher or public safety. So we just wanted to clarify when we first started to analyze, right, that we were limiting that first pool to positions that we both jointly hold, right? So we didn't give the impression that we were gonna analyze positions that are unique in each organization. But when you get to that last sentence and we talk about analyzing compensation, we were definitely meaning both salaries and benefits, right? So I think when we get to that point by looking at similar positions, we will be analyzing, you know, that overall benefits, which at that point, I do think would apply across both organizations, even though it's not specified.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other comments, I see we've got three proposals for additions. So let's just go through and see if we agree with each of these additions. The first one is to add the word "budget" under "processes." How many people can support doing that? Okay, that's approved. The next one is at the end of that section to add the words after "facilitate joint fiscal forecasting, including planning for annual increases in employee compensation." How many people can support adding that into this? Okay, that is a majority. And if we go down to number four, we... The suggestion was to add at the end there, "and local authority." How many people can support? Okay, that is a...
Can we just ask a question? Do we think that local authority is clear? Will other people and will the Board of Supervisors, as they go to vote on this tomorrow, will they understand what we meant by local authority?
Do you have a suggestion for clarifying it? And...
Local control of what?
And I think it might help to add something like "to raise revenue" or... 'Cause that's really what you mean. You're not asking for local authority for some other component. You're really looking at...
And more local authority to raise revenue?
Flexibility in local... Would it work to say more local authority to raise revenue?
Would it work to say more local authority to raise revenue?
I think the thing is, we compare counties to cities and towns and we don't have the same authority and that sort of thing, so it's-
So maybe more local authority over-
Or diversify revenue and raise revenue.
Diversify revenue, yeah? That's good.
And so do we want to say increase local authority?
Diversify revenue, because not necessarily increase, that's, you know, we-
Well, that's true.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Diversifying revenue, it's protecting the revenue streams we have, because if, what happened last year is they went after proffers and, so that limited our ability to generate revenue. So I would just leave it as, and local authority to make decisions for the system.
Well, but we don't want the Board of Supervisors to make decisions for the school system. They can't do that, right? This is really about revenue, the revenue package, right?
No, it's about the whole legislative package. And so develop a joint legislative program.
Yeah, it's just for funny, this, Board of Supervisors does not get involved in how we run the schools.
No, I understand they don't, but my concern is really not about the Board of Supervisors, but about the General Assembly taking mission creep and-
I hear you. So what if we said on improving and protecting state funding?
No.
Well, okay, then we were talking about the proffers, yeah.
Diversifying imply that we want multiple sources. So rather than then limiting, to your point, I, I think it implies that we want to protect what we have and increase it, because we're trying to diversify what we already have, not go the other way.
Yeah, and I guess my concern is this would also deal with if the state wants to offer vouchers and things like that, which is part of the discussion regarding charter schools. And so it's actually making sure that the funds that are allocated for state funding of education actually end up in the local authorities. So local authority to make decisions.
And more local authority over-
To can protect and improve.
Well, except that I think you're talking about local authority and how to spend the money.
Yeah.
And that's on us. This is local authority in, in where we get the money from. We, what we want as a school board is authority to decide when we get that public money, whether or not we're spending it on vouchers, charters, or public school classrooms, right?
Right, that's why the diversity of the revenue is not the point.
So Ms. Corbett Sanders, do you have a, a recommendation here?
I would take off the diversify revenue and just say, and maintain local authority.
Could we get a vote on that?
Okay, and maintain local authority over funding or just maintain local-
Revenue decisions regarding education.
No, funding, because, I mean, I understand where you're coming with the funding, because recently there was a vote that a regional charter would take SOQ funding from locale, from localities, right? So if that's what we're getting at, then I think protecting, but improving state funding for education, right, doesn't cover that, because that's considered state funding, right?
And protecting local authority.
And protecting local authority.
And, and let's try that and see if that, and protecting local thor, authority.
Making decisions regarding education.
Authority over revenue? Protecting local authority over revenue?
I guess over revenue, because it can be general.
Okay, let's try that. So improving state funding for education and protecting local authority over-
Revenue decisions.
Revenue decisions, how about that?
The problem with that is the revenue decisions are really our, they're two different things. There's how we spend the money and how we raise the money, right? Board supervisors raise the money, we spend the money, right? So it's not part of our legislative packet for the Board of Supervisors to get involved in our decisions about how we spend the money, right? This is really protecting-
So what if we just stopped it at protecting local authority?
That's what I-
Or over raising revenue?
All right, so, yeah, we do have to make a decision here.
Can we just vote on this as it is?
And protecting, okay, so the way it is now is and protecting local authority over revenue. So how many people can support that? Okay, how many cannot? Okay, so we're not going to do this, so other ideas?
Could we, I'm sorry, could we go back to the original language and see who can support it, which is, and, what was it again?
Develop a joint legislative program for the 2018 General Assembly session focused on improving state funding for education.
And-
Local authority.
And local authority to diversify revenue. I'd like to put that back and get a vote, because we changed it without getting a vote on that.
Correct. And local authority-
To diversify revenue.
To diversi, and local authority to, all right, let's-
Can you speak to the verb?
Yes, you're right.
Can't sing local, or, can't sing might not be the right.
Increasing.
Okay, increased local authority to diversify revenue. Okay, how many people can support that? All right, that's a majority. So we'll go with that. And with that, I'd like to get a show of hands to see how many people would like to use this document as amended by these three things. Let the Board of Supervisors know this is our suggestions for what both boards should approve. How many can support this document as this? Okay. All right, so that is it and I appreciate everybody's thoughtfulness on that. And this work session is adjourned. We'll take a five-minute break.
Two minutes.
Two-minute break and then we'll come back and go on to the next item. Thank you.